Jeremy.
Eric is here. Hi, Cinda.
So, did you know how to get the livestream back up?
Let me make it work.
There it is.
Thank you.
Here, we are live. I believe so.
You can be on the hill, bucky, or there ain't some...
Can you help get that up?
I have not a friend. Doug said I didn't need it because your email...
You know the password for this one?
He said it was in your email.
Said it went to get Lori.
There's some people that are good with cows and some people good with computers. I'm kind of a cow guy.
Like it.
What happened? What happened to just using the easel?
Chartboard. Go back to chartboard.
Who knows how to run an easel?
They want the screen up, but they want their...
They want that on the screen?
Yes. Well, I mentioned that part, but I don't know what the password is. Do you remember this password?
It's valid, is it not?
Valley County?
Yeah, you, yeah, send it logs into that computer. And then we have to tell it laptop over here.
Is it capital value?
Okay, so let me make sure this is on. And we're gonna say laptop.
Is the password public?
Public.
Lowercase.
That's okay.
There we go.
That's fine.
Okay.
Now, you got the OS going on too?
Do we want to pull up one of the commissioners' emails or Doug's? You're not gonna have access, so why don't I pull up mine?
It's just the... No, that's okay. There's such a delay. Maybe by the time you, they get this finished, it'll be showing up on the screen. So, you know, to, like, for me at my computer to look and listen. You're not on yet.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and they've got that computer's on there.
So I can go to Gmail.
We should be good as soon as they get out.
Now, you want... Hold on, let me...
Are they getting it?
Where is OS?
No, you're good. Continue on.
Okay. This.
It's on my email. Only problem with this is... I can, I can log on to... No PowerPoint. You have to open PowerPoint.
I don't know.
Can we plug into their laptop?
Well, if that's an option, let's do that as long as we've got an adapter. We need a USB-C adapter.
I, that, that's a Jeremy question.
Let me go see. I might have one. Hang on.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
How to show what they want.
That makes most sense. If we can do it that way, then that's great.
Is that an apple or is that...
Well, so this is what's going to the screen.
If that's an apple, I may not have the right.
Well, we need an adapter to go from the HDMI.
But mine's for a PC.
It's a PC, I think.
Yeah, no, this is a Mac.
I don't have the right adapter.
We'll just do without it.
Do you have Teams still on, right?
That doesn't have to be...
So we're doing that?
Nothing's gonna pull up on this one?
I'm not sure.
Or maybe.
I'll, I'll be honest with you.
Let's find out.
I was actually told that everybody had this.
No, I only sent it to, to Rita.
I'm Rita.
Okay. What they probably have is like on...
So he emailed it to you. You're gonna go see if you have it.
He emailed it to me. I know it's there.
And then we're gonna see if we can, if this computer has...
If they can share. Because it's not gonna be an option here.
I do, but I know not every computer does. I, I know it does weird things, doesn't it? Yes.
You know, the other thing is, if you two can look at this, if you can view this on this...
Yeah, you know it to me.
For myself.
Is this Doug's?
He has worked... We could do that.
Came up, it's probably Doug's.
And then Ed could have a copy.
What was, what were you...
And then, no, let's do the, sorry, Jeff. Jeff Abrams. It would've come from like around 11 o'clock, maybe this morning, 11:30?
Yep, that's where I'm going back down.
Is this Doug's?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I, you need to, I would say log out. Over there. See, that's Doug's. That's Doug's email. So you need to...
Worth milk, go again.
It, it has a tendency to do that on this computer. You might have hopped on to the other, well, no, no, this one.
There it came back.
There you go. So, sign out.
It's just my...
Just right there, sign out.
If you said you do email in PDF format, I can...
Oh, a PDF, yeah.
If you're Mac, I should be able to...
And then you should have a login as you here momentarily. Oh, you actually might just need to, we need to like, go here and back up. Or just hit that, hit that login thing again.
Enter?
No, because you're right now, you're gonna log out. You don't wanna log out. Or click on that icon. That's, go, go back to the, the desktop. Just minus. I know. Or go, I can't get this thing. Okay, where was that valid, honey, email? And let it log you.
It's gotta be...
There, now you can use another account. No, it's popping up as Doug. He, he's got it. Save it as him. I don't remember, but Doug did, so...
There's a corner on top there, is that?
Somebody's gonna want to what I was saying. How about if you and Ed literally look at this computer while they're walking through it on there?
Sure.
Does that work?
Yep, it works with it.
Um, because you guys...
In, capital in.
No, not right now.
Yeah, that is next, yeah. And then Q, capital Q.
Let me get into the...
Shouldn't matter? Try, try putting in your, my password. Your full name. Doug did.
Slash.
Yeah. Because I'll come up with Doug's full name. Oh, no, it came up with Doug's D Miller at blah, blah, blah. Try that whole. Easiest thing to do when someone wants to actually do a PowerPoint is to get that PowerPoint and convert it into a PDF.
It does not exist.
You aren't in the system. You don't really, it's just a go.
Why are we paying you? You don't exist.
Why don't we do it this way, everyone? You know, Ed can share this screen and they can just like click forward as, as we move from screen to screen. There you go. You guys understand that, Deb? So there, the two of them are gonna share this screen. It works out better, actually, that we don't have a third person because it'll be easy for them to share, to, to just view the slideshow instead of looking at that. They're gonna look at this, so... Well, bring, 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 bring up the slideshow on this one.
You'll be looking the same thing.
We'll be looking at the same thing and then you can just toggle back and forth from the notes to the PowerPoint. That's how it's, that's the only way this is gonna work.
I think this could...
You want me to put you in that slideshow view?
Well, I can log into email.
Use Doug's password to get into it. I know Kathy had to.
For email?
When she took over, type you want to.
That's crazy. Um, but anyway, back to your minutes. You are still streaming. So, and then when they're ready, they'll just say slideshow and then they... You belong to... All right.
And then, how do I get back to my notes? Um... So if you want, you can just get in this view. You don't need the slideshow, right? This'll be easier. You can just, okay, toggle back and forth.
Oh, man.
So these are your two. Yeah. You got that? Yeah. Okay. Does that work for you guys?
Yep, we're good.
I think this is the best solution that we have right now.
Okay, so, we're gonna go on down. This is Idaho Headwaters Economic Study Group. And I'm, Rick, please state your full name and the town you live in. Yep, Rick Faraday, McCall, Idaho. A local business owner in McCall. Uh, and my wife Deb, she's also a local, a part of my business. She'll be speaking also.
She's the better half.
She's the better half. So, the first slide you see there is, is, uh, you know, the, why are we, what are we, what are we here? What are we doing? Uh, and, uh, we are a, uh, the businesses in McCall and Valley County are, have a huge stake in, in what happens in our county. We are looking at the, the, the biggest, the biggest economy I have ever seen and I think everybody would agree that we, that any of us ever have ever seen in Valley County. Things are good here, uh, very good. And so good, in fact, that everybody wants to come here and spend whatever it takes to buy property here. My business and many other businesses are suffering right now from, from a lack of employees and a lack of affordable housing. And it's, it's a big deal for us. So, we're concerned about what this, this proposal for a, for a mega mine in our backyard is gonna do to our economy. And we don't know because the USFS really didn't ask for a, for a thorough, thorough analysis. Uh, so, we just, we just want you guys to know that, that, uh, we, we think that the, the county should know. The people of Valley County should know. So, uh, it, did you all get our, our, uh, mission statement and our link to our website?
That was like a week or so.
And, and our resolution? Okay, good. So I won't, I won't go, go through any of that stuff because, you know, we, we called out a lot of whereas is there. Why we are doing what we're doing. And we have fifty, uh, just over fifty businesses. Frankly, we didn't go to any of the huge businesses, the Riot Aides and Albertsons and stuff, because we just didn't wanna go through the corporate time and that it was gonna take for us to, you know, possibly sign those people on. But these are all local businesses that are, that are members of this study group.
Non-corporate.
Non-corporate, yeah. So, uh, why are we here? The Idaho Department of Labor, uh, we'll go to the second slide. The Idaho Department of Labor ranks this area second in the state for the highest concentration of tourism employment. So, you know, we're, we're called Idaho's Adventure Corridor. All the people that fly out and boat and fish and hike and morel hunt and hunt. It's a big, it's a big industry here. So it's, it's, and it's, people come here for the pristine, pristine experience of, you know, of the open spaces, the mountains, the clean waters, the rivers. So, um, and the USFS really didn't do their due diligence on this project, on the DEIS. They didn't, because they didn't ask for really any meaningful economic analysis. So, we're asking for that. That's what we're asking for. That's our ask. Just a reasonable look at what this is gonna do to our economy here. We don't know. We really don't know what it's gonna do. But we think it's a prudent ask. Okay, so I think we're on to the next slide. Let's go. Let me toggle to the slides here. Go to three. So, okay, I just, I just went over, uh, I'm on slide three now. Benefits, the perpetual commission, a benefits-only analysis for the DEIS. And their study omitted any drivers of the actual existing local economy. So, uh, and they say, Highland Economics says, "We did not evaluate potential economic impacts due to possible effects of SGP on other economic activities such as the recreation or tourism industry." That's a direct quote from the DEIS. So then, so the next slide is a slide, it is a comment to the DEIS from Phil Lansing, who's a natural resource economist, a very well thought-of economist. And, um, you can read that, but it's, he's basically saying the DEIS did not do a proper job here. So, uh, you know, this is a, and, and he talks about our, our recreation industry and high-paying positions, the people living here by choice. So, much of this economic activity takes place because this is a beautiful area. People choose to visit, live in, and work. And that is our main economic driver, I believe. So, the next slide, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Deb take over from here because she's a little more knowledgeable about NEPA stuff, although neither of us are great NEPA people. You have to go to the Forest Service to get that, but, uh, I'll let Deb take over and talk about the best available science and whatnot.
So our, my name's Deb Faraday and I live at 315 Burns Road in McCall. And I'm also part of the family business. We've had the business since 1980. Um, so I, I'd just like to bring us back to slide number five. Key questions remain on the impacts and risks to local businesses. Uh, so these relevant principles of NEPA show insufficient analysis. And so if we're gonna look at best available science, so regarding economic impact, impacts, markets, environmental externalities, impacts on recreation, cultural health, and other effects on the human environment. And we've also got, um, this connected action clause. And by that, that's, so any change in demographic and traffic as a result of the project. So, but for the Stibnite Mine, no demographic changes or changes of traffic patterns, et cetera. This clause has to be included as part of the NEPA policy considerations. Yet the forest did not require contractors to identify broad changes in traffic and demographics as connected actions. So, uh, we'll note that traffic to an international port like Lewiston, for example. Actions, we'll note the traffic on, on major Highway 55. Those would be involved in this case. Okay? Um, and then let's go to the, uh, the bullet point called hard look doctrine. So, that hard look doctrine is, so dismissive of site-specific effects, local economies in NEPA. That was ignored. There's no look at the economic effects, local economies, et cetera. And then, uh, use of appropriate economic modeling. So, let's go to slide number six, okay? And let's take a, a quick look at, um, economic modeling versus baseline assumptions. So economists we spoke with don't think that the implan model was an appropriate analysis tool compared to something like the eco-services approach. US Forest Service admits, "It's a very generic economic impact modeling system. Valley County's not a typical farming and extractive resource economy. Forest Service failed to recognize this. We're far more diverse than what was implied in the DEIS." What do we have now? We have a lot more recreation and tourism versus the ag extractive models that were looked at here. So that's, that's really important to look at. So, US forces never looked at overall role of existing supporting economies in the area. Uh, potential for economic costs created by the Stibnite Gold Project were not considered modeled or described. There was an extremely limited analysis of other socioeconomic implications of the Stibnite Gold Project. There was also, um, no analysis was made of a no-action alternative. Okay, if they took no action. We need to take a look at that, too. So the economic impact analysis presented here is focused solely on the economic impact supported by Stibnite Gold Project. As outlined in the study work plan, that was from Highland Economics 2017. And as we already stated, we did not evaluate potential economic impacts due to possible effects of the Stibnite Gold Project on other economic activities such as recreation and tourism. And that's just that quote, uh, that was in the, the, uh, the DEIS. Also, on this particular slide, um, we have, uh, number two, government services and revenues dealing with schools, roads, et cetera. We've got number three, housing implications. Number four, labor and materials. Number five, we've got population demographics. And number six, we have property impacts. Let's go to slide seven. And we, I wanna just take a look here. So, um, modeling the chief area economic strengths and threats in Valley County, we want that, uh, to be looked at. We wanna analyze the potential economic effects for all business sectors. We want a model scenario of negative operational impacts. And let's compare economies fairly on a trend analysis. So if you look at trends from 50 years ago versus trends now, you know, there's maybe a big difference. And maybe this would come in handy for Valley County Commissioners on other projects as well, if this were to be done. You would see a trend analysis that might give you, um, further information. And then a model of a no-action economic scenario. I mean, that's, that's possibility, too. Let's go to slide eight. This is covering number two under those real, those six important things. This is the government services and revenues. So we've got address that connected actions clause that we talked about. Road improvements and maintenance responsibilities. Examine substantial adverse impacts for public schools and other services. Understand effects of no local tax revenues. So these taxes aren't gonna be coming in from the mine locally. Analyze implications to Valley County taxpayers and examine questions of McCall comprehensive plan capability. Let me move to my notes here. So, uh, chief economic threats. Yeah, I wanna go back here to, um, chief economic threats. So to what degree are Valley County economic threats derived from a stable and distinguish the area and have, uh, contribute, and then are contributing to economic health and vitality? So to what degree are Valley County's economic strengths derived from a stable, um, economy? And they distinguish this area and have contrib, and have contributed to economic health and vitality? So the chief economic threats are these threats to area business, climate, and general economic well-being that are linked to activities that could significantly negatively impact area amenities, environmental attributes, and quality of life. Would any downside of even small negative impacts to visitor, recreation, and ranching farming economies potentially offset benefits to the McCall area economy from the proposed development of the Stibnite Gold Mine? And then analyzing those potential economic effects on other affected business sectors, households, and individuals such as general employment trends and factors driving attractiveness to workers, multiplier effects, travel and tourism boosted trade, recreation. So the DEIS, DEIS does not provide, um, a sufficient characterization of recreational use in the area affected by action alternatives in the DEIS. And thus impacts to recreation are underestimated and lacking analysis of alternative comparison. For example, hunting and fishing. Idaho Fish and Game asked for an assessment of potential effects of new roads and road closures on hunting, fishing, trapping, including effects of new roads on stream channel and wildlife habitats. And then, of course, we have real estate. Uh, so model a scenario where the current economies were negatively impacted by normal mine operations causing a potential slowdown in the dominant economic sectors of McCall's economy that rely on clean water and natural, healthy landscapes. We would also like, uh, how about modeling the potential adverse effects to our natural resources and related rural economies if there's either a catastrophic or chronic contamination release or both at the mine site along with, um, along the transportation corridor or downstream or downwind of the mine site? Compare economic, the economies fairly. Compare the current visitor and recreation-based economy and the current farm ranch economies directly against the Stibnite Gold Project benefits that Highland described on an annual basis, not accrued. And then the last one, model, of course, a no-action economic scenario. So community services and revenues, I believe that might be the next slide. I'm just gonna go on my notes because I am talking about, um, a lot of these effects. There's no traffic analysis except for Warm Lake Highway to Highway 50, you know, to Highway 55. So this relates to the earlier reference to the connected action clause, traffic spills, accidents, et cetera. Who has general responsibilities for road improvements and maintenance? Um, what is the extent of the substantial adverse impacts for public schools and service sector if there is a net in-migration due to mining jobs? And then understanding implications of the no local tax revenues accruing to local municipalities. Analyzing costs and describe the mitigation measures for costs incurred by Valley County taxpayers. And again, examine that comprehensive plan compatibility with McCall. And examine potential for tax revenue loss from businesses negatively affected by the mining operation closed or relocated out of the area. And understand how water treatment costs may change. And housing, uh, fully assess the major adverse affordable housing availability impacts that might arise. How do, how does in-migration affect, um, and relate to present housing supply? And can mitigation actions be considered? Understanding how impacts may affect those not working at the mine. Reexamine housing conclusions in the DEIS. So the overstock of homes that occasionally, um, are used, that occasionally used are not vacant or available. They're second homes for people that choose to own a home in McCall and then spend their free time and money here. Then those population demographics. Understanding the reasons behind why there is positive net migration occurring in Valley County already, quality of life, high amenities. Examine, uh, relative demographic, social, and economic trends in the two counties and larger regions as appropriate. And then costs of outmigration beyond lost property value by people affected by the presence and operation of a nearby large-scale industrial project and associated impacts. Um, when we get to labor and materials, if we look at that heading, analyze how the proposed mine's labor force will be obtained and to what extent it will actually impact the local economy. Where no workers live, how and where do they circulate their pay? Existing residents versus in-migrating workers. Mine site living versus Valley County residency. Exploring, um, local labor supply, local markets, and the size of local multiplier impacts. So the degree to which the mine will source materials and or label locally as opposed to importing them from regional, um, from other regions or other countries. That last slide is, uh, probably a, a pretty important one. Key questions remain on impacts and risk to local businesses. So the next steps, RFPs, budget, timetable, and deliverables. So if we begin now, we can have results within the SDEIS comment period. Several available contractors, um, I've weighed in on this. The, uh, the first deliverable, um, the SDEIS ends, uh, late November and that cost is anywhere from 30,000 to 45,000. So this would be a, a trends analysis of Valley County economies and a gap analysis details. A full analysis of economic effects, including lost value to other industries, net community service cost impacts, and economic service value, or excuse me, economic, um, service value, that ecosystem service value we were talking about, and then property value, et cetera. So it'd be good to get that full analysis. So we just feel like it's a reasonable request, um, from this local business community. And more businesses are interested in hearing about this as we, um, you know, get the information out to them just so that they know, we all know what the impacts are going to be to our economy of this mine. You know, uh, then we can make more educated, uh, decisions about our businesses. If we get that information, we'll be able to have more information on, on how to deal with it, how to deal with that situation. So I'm going to turn it over for, uh, questions. And any of us are here to, to, to answer questions, uh, Rick or Jeff.
Thank you so much for your time.
Well, I guess the biggest challenge is to me is the fact that is a timing issue. Doing RFP, we're probably looking at a couple of months to award the contract. My concern being is we should have done this last year. We're, we're too close to the end of this to get it done by October 1st. That's my concern. Want this back?
That's okay.
You can come and get it if you want.
No worries.
I'll just shut up. The other concern I have is to the taxpayers. I pay taxes, you guys pay taxes. And I feel like if you guys want this study to happen, that maybe you should have a little skin in the game. And I don't know if you'd be willing to do that. This is going to be more than 35 or 40,000. I can tell you this is going to be well over 100,000 easy for the information you guys are asking for. It's a lot of different things in there. And I don't know if there's anybody in Idaho who can do this study. You guys?
Well, we, we, I have looked out of state, uh, and, and we have gotten quotes, uh, starting when we first started out, it was in the 10,000 range, and it's been going up since then, I will admit. But, uh, we feel pretty confident that's, that it's going to be under, under $40,000. It, it may not be the, a grandiose study that, you know, takes in every, every item, but I think it's important that we hit the high points. And I don't, I don't know why it would take two months to do an RFP. I mean, you could, you could get this published in the Star News and get letters out to, um, a list of, of these, the people that do this, and we have a list of some of them, and I'm sure it'd be easy to come up with others. And I would think it'd be, you could do that in 30 days.
If you could get us that list, Rick, I think that would help a lot.
Mr.?
Yes?
It seems to me that this year in your budget, you have put in quite a bit more monies towards economic development. And it's not specifically designated to one particular fund. In the past, you've given it to West Central Mountain Coalition. So perhaps some of those monies might be able to be used for this project, which certainly would be beneficial to many of the issues that the county has.
And, and, uh, responding to your skin in the game, I am certainly willing to put money into this study. I know other businesses are. I can't speak for all 50 businesses, and, and some of them are very small businesses, so, you know.
Well, and, and I think it's a fair ask.
I, I think it is, too.
I think it's a fair ask on your guys' side. One of the things that concerns me is, um, if this is going to come from the county, we've got to include not just McCall Con Plan, but Donnelley's and Cascade. I think that should all be a part of it, a county-wide kind of a study.
Is there a county comprehensive plan?
Oh, yes.
Well, it should include that, too. And, and I was thinking about that when we were stating that today, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Yeah, sure.
Commissioners, we, when we started out with this project, we very intentionally wanted to involve the, um, public sector in this request because we felt like, um, coming from the county, the, the material, the information, the results of this analysis would be, would be much more widely embraced by both counties as opposed to an economic business-based group that, you know, arguably they're different sectors, they're coming at it from very different perspectives, and it should be viewed as a credible initiative. But we felt like to have the most credible document and deliverable at the end of this process, that we're hoping to have it come from the county instead of being sanctioned by the business group. And so I think that there's, from the very beginning, been the buy-in that you're suggesting, El, that, hey, if you guys are going to somehow benefit from this information, then maybe there's a shared, uh, collaborative approach that we go through this RFP process on. So I'll, I'll say that as a major, major point. And then, um, underneath that, I'll say that we have had, um, pretty significant recent detailed discussions with at least one contractor who is, uh, already very spooled up on this. They have walked through a series of deliverables that starts with this trends analysis as number one and understanding where the gaps in information are. And then number two would be actually doing the analysis. And I think that's where this number came from. That wa- that came in, those two pieces together came in at about 42. And they said that they could begin that work as soon as they were asked to. There's another series of deliverables after that that, um, deal with generalizing the, um, the comments, the EIS comments that come from it and so on and so forth. But we felt, coming from the county, that those would be the two pieces that, that you all would be most interested in receiving. The, the analysis, where, where are we missing chunks of data? And then the actual analysis itself. And they were prepared to, um, ha- have that deliverable occur by October 1st so that it was particularly relevant, not just to the business community and the public at large after they have a chance to digest the findings of that analysis, but also to the county and then how the county may respond in terms of, um, other cooperative agreements that may want to look at infusing language into with, with Perpetua and so forth.
Well, and it's not like we've been sitting here twiddling our thumbs for the last six years. We have been involved with some of the discussions with Perpetua on road agreements. Some of the things that we want to see done, for example, uh, part of their plan is to use Johnson Creek for the first three years. Well, if you're going to use Johnson Creek, you're going to have to pave it. Because it's going to fall apart if you leave it, if you drive on it as is now. Those are the kind of things we've talked about. Uh, I've talked to a great deal about them, about employee housing, because I think that's going to be their biggest challenge. And honestly, their comeback was, we're going to pay everybody $70,000 or more so they can compete against our locals. Well, that's not employee housing. That's, that doesn't even come close to satisfying that concern that I have. But we've never been able to get back and really sit down and talk about it. The county will make revenue off of all the conditional use permits, the building permits, the stuff they build, whether it's the mine site or out here, um, and to cover our costs as far as inspection, all that kind of stuff. But I think it's, um, would be good if you guys could get us that list of folks you think that can do this kind of work.
We can do that right away.
Because I don't really know too many folks that can do that. And the more, the ones I do know, they're going to want a couple of years.
We, we were very.
That's my concern.
Yeah, we, we, we were very intentional in terms of having very strategic discussions with these contractors because you've raised questions in the past about, okay, this appears to be a valid ask. The question is, how do we execute it? How do we make it happen? And so we've taken quite a bit of pains to make sure that this was a reasonable ask coming to the county, knowing your limitations, your process, the sequence of, of, um, protocol that you go through to establish these contracts. And we feel like, um, if we continue to move with some speed, we can, we can proceed on this course. Um, and certainly we don't know, perhaps the supplemental might be delayed. We don't know that either.
That's true, that's true.
But we feel like we can get this deliverable to occur halfway within the window. Now, just to let you know, a tidbit about the window, right now, it is, um, is 45 days. We expect it to go at a minimum to 90 days, but there is a request being floated right now that it goes to full 120 days. That would push us out to, to almost the end of the year. And certainly, any, um, any work product that would come through a contractor would, would, would be on everyone's desks far, far, far before that date.
Well, we're out of time.
Okay.
Wish we'd have done, got this as an action item, but we didn't. So we can't vote today about, but, so I'm going to suggest that you send us that list, folks you think that can do this, and then send this presentation in a PDF format to us. Because I see things on there that I want to ask this study to do. I want demographics, how many kids are going to be in Cascade? How many are going to be in McCall or Donnelley? How many more sheriff deputies are we going to need to, for law enforcement? All those kind of questions that, uh, I think are appropriate. And then when Commissioner Moffin can come back on and we can sit down, we'll have an action item. We'll vote on this and see where it goes. Ed, you want to add anything?
Well, yeah, I was just trying to kind of wrap my mind around what exactly we're looking at. We're trying, number one, want this study to happen. You're basically asking us to make this a, a county project. I know we did talk about a, um, a joint.
That could be potentially part of your discussion in terms of an agreement.
When you bring this to a, to us, can you bring it in a format like that where that we can make sense? That we go, okay, this is, this, this, and this, and this? In other words, uh, when you bring it as an action item.
To distill our presentation into a very specific ask.
Yes, very specific act of how this gets done.
Yes.
And I'm, and I'm looking forward to seeing what questions you want this company to look into.
Yeah.
Your questions along with ours.
Yeah, just. I think they probably mirror each other, El, you know, you talk.
There's some little things, um, trash, nobody's even talking, I haven't seen anything about garbage and trash and how all that's going to work.
Yeah, we can digest it for, for you all.
But the, the, the big deal is, though, is to get this underway and moving. And in order to do that, it has to be very concise, and you have to bring us something to vote on, essentially.
Yeah.
And.
Do you have a sense of when the earliest opportunity for that could be?
Well, we can't, I don't know what the, the agenda looks like on the 5th, you know? Are you following this early as possible? Can you get us by next Tuesday?
Yes.
That would, that would be the very best.
Either that or the following week before we.
The Tu- Tuesday would be, what, what, what date is Tuesday? I'm sorry.
5th.
The 5th of July. Yes, we'll have it, uh, to Doug and we'll CC you on.
Anyway, spell it out so that it's, it's pretty concise.
Understood.
And, and if there's any partnership interested in it, that needs to be in there and concise.
They go to the.
Right, then when we're looking at it, basically, we're not looking at all individual questions.
Yeah.
But a program.
Let's put in as an action on our decision on Idaho Headwaters.
Time table, the rest of it.
We, I think we can get you guys in next Tuesday.
Okay.
At 9:15. It's an action item for Idaho Headwaters' decision. And hopefully you can get us all that information from then.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get it to you well ahead of that, so you have a chance to digest it. We don't want you mulling it over.
There's three of us, all three of us got to make that decision because it's going to be some money. And I think the probably way it'll go is we might go up to X amount of dollars and anything above that. You guys may be asked to cover.
Is that the model that you would, okay, I think that's totally reasonable.
Well, and if it was at the beginning of the, a new year, it would be a lot easier. But we're at the end of the budget year, and so everybody's starting to go over and under, and we're starting to get short in a few areas. And so there's some things we got to do.
Sure, we'll craft the, the proposal that way.
Okay, all right, that's what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I had sent a letter in to Doug. And I'm not really going to go through the whole thing, but my point with all of this and the economics is times have changed a lot since we first began hearing about the prospects of a gold mine. And their economics then were much different than they are now. And one of the things that I think is really important is the psyche of our community. It's also changed a lot through the COVID, through the development, through everything that we never even imagined would be happening. And a section of conversation that we rarely talk about is our youth. And our youth are severely suffering from being able to become professionals, find a home, feel secure about their communities. And, um, over the last week, I learned of two young women that tried to kill themselves because they think that suicide is a better way to deal with the struggle. And it breaks my heart. And so when you're going forward with these type of considerations and looking at the future of our community, I want you to really think about the differences of what has been happening in the last years between how we came into this community, how you grew up, how Deb was, to what these young, these are young women, young men that feel hopeless. And so the psyche and the well-being of our community, setting ourselves towards a better future is our choice now for them, and it's very, very important.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Thanks for coming in, guys.
Lynn Lewinsky, McCall, Idaho.
Thanks for everyone's time today. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. We got more to do.
I think it did, it just came in as a fax.
Well, this time we're going to go into an executive session. So this time I'll make a motion.